Good evening, it is now six o'clock and I call this Tuesday, February 18th, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Would all stand please and join me in saluting. Okay, first order of business is approval of the minutes from February 11.
I'll move to approve the minutes from February 11.
I'll pay him. Approval of the warrants, I'll entertain a motion to approve school warrant number 1040 for $89,345.41, general warrant number 1041 for $144,235.79, and payroll warrant number 17 for $343,251.41.
So, second?
I'll pay him. Okay. So, over the, over our meeting last week, the police department, we appointed a new police officer, full-time police officer of the police department, so I'll ask Chief Smith to come up and just introduce our newest police officer.
Good evening. This is in the last meeting we appointed, Officer James Early to the North Brookfield Police Department. We discussed in our meeting last week what Mr. Early brings to our department. As I said there, he considered us in the town very lucky to have him. I'm glad that he applied here. What he brings is over six years of experience as a full-time police officer. He's a member of the semi SWAT team, he's a firearms instructor, an active shooter instructor, a TASER instructor, an Alice instructor, simunition instructor, stopstick instructor. He has done the completion of the instructor development class and also a sexual assault investigator. So, he brings a wealth of training to our department, he's got a ton of experience. As I said, when we did the background checks, we had nothing but positive reviews, and again, I couldn't be more honored to bring on or introduce Mr. James Early to the select board, the town members, residents of North Brookfield. So at this point, I'd like to introduce Officer James Early.
Good evening, members of the board, members of the town, happy to be here. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to ask them from here now.
No, we were impressed with the resume and the chief's due diligence, and we have every confidence in the chief in choosing the right candidates for this department. We've had nothing but stellar police officers here, and there's no reason why we don't think you won't be just as good as everybody else that the chief has put before us. So, we thank you and we welcome you, and if anybody has any questions, we just wanted everybody to have the opportunity to see Officer Early, if you see him on the road, you'll know what he looks like, you'll know his attitude. So, thank you for taking the time out tonight to come and introduce yourself. You got anything to ask?
No, no, we covered it all and welcome the board.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I'm happy to be here. Taking everyone's hand, thanks for having me.
Yep.
Thank you, welcome. So, everybody, that's our newest police officer in town, and the entire department is here to support the, our newest member. So, thank you, everybody, for coming out, we appreciate it. Community appointments, downtown development committee, there are a couple of people that need to get on the downtown development committee. Matt, is it Seidler? Matt here? No. And Dawn, and Sharon's the only one that's here.
They're probably at the meeting, it starts at 6:30, they might be over at the police station, so.
Oh, okay.
They might be over there, but.
All right, so, well, we know who you are, so we don't need to, I mean, we do this so that if we don't know them personally, we get a chance to meet them, and so.
Unless you want to say a few words, Sharon.
Yeah.
I love North Brookfield.
Yeah, motion to appoint him free, unless you have a reservation.
Nope, I don't. All right, so I make that motion. Since John's second.
All right. So, I'll pay him. Okay, perfect, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And we have two, oh Sharon, you're getting on a historical commission too.
Yes.
All right, so.
I'm trying to help save the old cemetery, and I'm doing some work on that, we're going to have it listed as a historic property, and then access funding through a certain program in order to restore and hopefully preserve some of the headstone, the, you know, the gravestones.
Oh, nice.
Which was cemetery on North Main and Maple Street?
Right.
Oh, good.
It's in on the little park fences over there.
I saw those, they're fabulous, they're fabulous, good job.
Yeah, and see if you can get that railroad station back forth, too.
Oh, I've been trying, John and I have a plan.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion on the historical.
I move to appoint Marilyn Borst and Sharon Donovan to the historical commission. Second?
Would you may take it all in favor? All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ian, next on the roster is CMRPC, is going to give us a presentation on green communities. Green and joining green, right? Something like that. We'll move out here, and John just want to give up this.
Someone might take my seat.
All right, so, good evening, everybody. As you might know, I'm Ian McWilliam from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. We, together with the town of North Brookfield, we help with any sort of development projects within the town, any planning-type efforts that you might have in order to help better the community. And so, with me tonight is Kelly Brown from, she is from the Department of Energy Resources in the Green Communities Program. She is the Central Massachusetts Regional Representative. I work with her a lot on green communities with a variety of towns in our region, and so today, we're just going to sort of give the presentation of what Green Communities is and how it can help the town and what sort of resources are available at DWR and from CMRPC to help the town should you choose to go towards designation.
Great, so, good evening. Like Ian said, great introduction, thank you. My name is Kelly Brown. I've been the Central Mass Regional Coordinator of the Green Communities Division for, I just hit my 10-year mark, so I've been with the program since it began. I want to go to the next slide. I just want to, before I get into my presentation, I just want to say that the director of the Green Communities Program, who's been with us for a few months now, is also in the audience, Brian Sullivan. He's out here just, you know, seeing how we're out in the different communities in our region and the kind of presentations we offer. So, the Green Communities Division serves as the hub for all Massachusetts towns and cities, 351, on all matters related to energy. And I always like to start my presentation by saying that because I am going to go into a lot of detail tonight about the Green Communities Designation and Grant Program, which is our flagship program, but we do help communities on a lot of other things outside of the grant program. We have what's called municipal energy technical assistance, which is offered once a year. That's where communities can come in for up to $12,500 and ask for assistance to get audits in your oil heated buildings, or you could come in and get assistance with putting out an RFP for a solar project on one of your municipal properties. A lot of communities come in for measurement and verification if they've done a multiple of energy conservation measures. The other thing we do offer right now, which is the regional energy planning assistance, this is where we provide funds to the RPAs that basically result in hours for you guys, for communities, to get assistance in becoming a green community, as well as help with reporting once you become a green community. And it's something that has really worked in the CMRPC region in helping multiple communities surrounding you guys. I'll show you some slides in a little bit, they'll go into more detail, be able to take advantage of the Green Communities Program and achieve the criteria needed to become a green community. I also want to talk, so the main point of my presentation tonight is going to be the Green Communities Designation and Grant Program, and I will also highlight Mass Energy Insight, which is our web-based free energy management tool that's available to all 351 cities and So, the Green Communities Designation and Grant Program, it provides up to $20 million annually to designated green communities, and that's, what that means is qualifying green communities. And in a future slide, I'll go over what it means to qualify. The up to $20 million does not come from the state budget, it comes from REGI, which is the regional, REGI and alternative compliance payments. REGI is a regional energy greenhouse gas initiative and ACP funds, so it does not come out of the state budget. And those funds are used for energy efficiency-type projects, so upgrading interior, exterior lighting to LED, adding weatherization to municipal buildings, putting in new boilers, more energy efficient, as well as upgrading your controls in your schools or your municipal So, to date, we have 271 green communities. When you're looking at the map, the communities that you see in bold are the most recent green communities. They're in our last round that we just designated, a couple of weeks ago, we made the announcement, and it's 31 new green communities. One of them is your neighbor, which is West Brookfield, and then another one is neighbor on the other side, which is Spencer. I always think it's helpful when I'm out in a community for them to be able to see the benefits of their local neighboring communities that have benefited in the program. So, what you're seeing up there is some communities around you warned where Barry and how they benefited over the course of the program. So, the Green Communities Designation Grant Program came out in 2010, that's when we announced our first 35 green communities, and it's been going since then, which is up to the 271 that I just showed you on the map. The reason you're going to see different amounts up there is because communities have been designated, some of them, like Barry, was designated in 2011, where a community like New Braintree is more recent. Now, the way the grant funds work is every community receives a designation grant, and the designation grant is based on a formula, and the formula is $125,000 as a base amount, and then additional funds based on the per capita and population of each community. So, I ran an estimated grant amount for North Brookfield, and you'd roughly receive about $135,000 in a designation grant. Now, communities, once they spend that designation grant on the types of projects I mentioned, efficiency-type projects, then you have access into what we call a competitive grant round, which is available once a year, and the competitive grants are up to $200,000 annually. So, can you just go back to that slide previously? So, that's why you're also seeing some differences in grant amounts compared to your neighboring communities, because depending on how often communities can come into the program, how quickly they finish their projects year to year, is going to depend on how much funding that they've been able to receive over the course of becoming a green community. Designation applications are due, they're due once a year. In general, over the 10 years, we've usually had them in October. This year, we did extend the deadline to November, and then we do try to announce the newly designated green communities usually by December. So, I've talked about the grant funds that are available, I've talked about how many green communities there are. Now, I'm going to go into the information on how you become a designated green community. In order to become a designated green community, you need to meet five criteria. The first criteria is across zoning. It's to have as-of-right sighting, and you can meet this criteria in one of three ways, through manufacturing, research and development, or generation. And most communities in my region that have met it through generation usually put in effect a solar bylaw. And in that solar bylaw, you need to have a parcel that can hold at least a minimum of 250 KW ground-mounted system. It doesn't need to be installed, it just needs to be zoned by right, which means no special permit, but it does allow for site plan review. And feel free to stop me anytime. The second criteria goes along with the first. So, for that parcel or parcels that would be by right, we would want to see expedited permitting in place. And what that means on the local level is a permitting process in North Brookfield that allows a person to come in, submit an application, and get through the permitting process for those as-of-right areas within a year. And that looks at site plan review and the language there.
Is that municipal parcels or private residential?
It could be any, you know what, a lot of the, you know, as community to community, the zoning's very different, so when New Braintree came through, they had more residential and ag when they were looking at their solar bylaw, but they did choose to pick a couple municipal properties.
They're working to get solar at the school and on the old landfill.
Okay. Is it going to be ground-mounted?
Yes.
Both of those projects?
Ground-mounted and a canopy system.
Canopy system, which is a ground.
Okay. Do you have a bylaw, do you have a solar bylaw already in place?
Yes.
Okay, and does it allow for by right on those properties, or is it just something you're pursuing with?
I'd have to read it again, I don't know just what it says. We have a meeting tomorrow night, I can check on it.
So, the reason I'm saying that is, you're already doing it, you're already going in that direction, you need to have the zoning in place before doing the projects to kind of tie it all up if you wanted to meet criteria one through the direction that you're pursuing.
It's in a preliminary stage right now, we don't have anything.
Yeah, see, the landfill that we have needs to be certified by DEP.
Yep.
So, we have repairs that are being made, so, but we do have an interested solar group once we get that designation, so it's kind of in the pipeline. So, I think, looking at our bylaw, we could probably adjust and we'll get together with you for what criteria we actually need to meet.
Yep, and the landfill is, so I've had other, another community that had mostly ag and residential cite their landfill, and being in process, it does take quite a bit of time to get through the process when you're citing a landfill, just because you do have to go through DEP and post-closure permits. Actually, the way the Green Communities Division works, the regional coordinators are located at the DEP office, so I sit at the Worcester office myself, and it actually, over the course of the 10 years, I've helped quite a few communities that have been interested in putting solar on landfills, worked through the process there, too, so I'm familiar. But yeah, that's definitely something to look at if you're already going that direction, and it is, it might not be in a bylaw, but CMRPC has helped other communities, and there's a lot of communities on the map already that have gone forward in a similar community like North Brookfield with the generation, so you'd be able to refer to a lot of other solar bylaws.
We were trying to save the forest land and the farmland and put it where it's already, you know, parking lots, a canopy, and the landfill, you don't have to annihilate the forest to do it, so.
Yep, New Braintree also, when, I went through an extensive process with them when they were looking at sites and, you know, with consideration to their farms and such, and so, they did do, they also went forward with a solar bylaw and picked a couple sites at municipal, but they went through a similar exercise to try to, you know, limit it on the farm end of things. So, criteria three, did I answer all your questions? Criteria three is, think of it in two parts, it's to put together an energy reduction plan, but the first piece is to put together the baseline for North Brookfield, and that would be looking at all the municipal use across your buildings, your street and traffic lights, and your vehicle use. And the way that most of the communities have met this criteria is to use that Mass Energy Insight tool that I referenced, that free web-based energy management tool, it's come in handy, it definitely, it was put out by us in 2010, definitely to help fill the need of meeting the criteria three and putting it here as a baseline. One of the biggest benefits of it and features that communities really like is that we did work right from the beginning with National Grid, EverSource, all the big utilities, so on the electric side, the data is just loaded right in there for you. It does require setup and such, which is where CMRPCs, most of CMRPCs help with communities becoming a green community is with this criteria. It would require loading in your delivered fuels, but at least the electric would be going in on a manual, on an ongoing basis. The second part is to put together the reduction plan, and that's to show 20% savings over a five-year period. And what you would do is have assessments done at your different municipal and school buildings to show different improvements that you can make, the different buildings to show 20% reduction off the baseline that's put together. Criteria four is to purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles. I should state, and usually I get a question about this, the language you see up here is exactly what's in our statute, and usually criteria four, people will say, do I have to purchase all electric vehicles? Because that's what a lot of people think when they see it. That's not the case. What it means is, the Board of Selectmen would adopt a fuel-efficient vehicle policy, and in the policy, there's mile-per-gallon ratings depending on different types of vehicle. So, there's a mile-per-gallon rating for a sport utility vehicle, for a compact car, for a van, for a truck, and then there are vehicles that don't need to meet the policy. Emergency response vehicles at this time do not have to comply, heavy-duty DPW vehicles, so F-250s and larger, don't have to comply. I should say that the energy reduction plan and the fuel-efficient vehicle policy both have to be adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And then on the schools' end, we would want a minimum of a letter from the superintendent adopting both. A lot of school committees, a lot of superintendents choose to have the school committee vote on the plan and the fuel-efficient vehicle policy, but it's not a requirement of the program.
So, the fuel-efficient vehicles would be if we each had a town vehicle, so we'd get cars?
That's a great way, though, that's the first time someone's asked that question. So, it depends on what you already have in your fleet, so it's looking at your vehicle inventory. If you don't have, all you would need is a minimum of one vehicle that would be considered non-exempt, you know, an F-150, or sometimes it's a dog officer's vehicle. If you don't have one vehicle, then what you would do is you would adopt an alternative policy, which is where you look at other ways to save energy, where it's, you know, some people have put in bike racks, preferred parking for EVs. Most communities have had one vehicle, but I do have a few in my region that haven't, and then there's numerous ones in Western Mass that have had to adopt the alternative policy. So, either way, we make sure that communities have a way to meet criteria four.
I have a question. When you're saying something about fuel economy and stuff like that, I see a gas station up the road, are they going to end up pulling something with that? I've been hearing people putting a gas station up here, but I don't know what's, I've been hearing it all the time, which means, I don't know if that's even happened, could be a fuel station, I think you're talking about it, I don't know if that's even happened. Fuel economy when, gas mileage, and you're up here and you're stuck with no gas and stuff.
That doesn't fit under the program of what we're asking, ours is more about purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles, but that might be.
Oh, you're talking about the house, program, houses.
Yeah, do we just adopt like a policy that we will purchase fuel-efficient vehicles in the future, or do we actually have to have one on?
Nope. So, you're basically, the whole exercise with criteria four would be, there's a policy that would come before for new purchases, and then you would develop a vehicle inventory of what you have in your vehicle fleet now, and it would be listed as exempt or non-exempt. So, you'd be listing all the DPW vehicles, there'd just be over 8,500 enlisted as exempt, and as you go through that, usually, most communities, the easiest way to start is looking at your insurance list, the vehicles you're paying insurance on, and then kind of going through it and seeing what's in your fleet already, and if you have a vehicle in your fleet that's considered non-exempt. And obviously, as you go to purchase vehicles, you'd be looking at the policy and the MPG ratings that are listed.
Right.
So, you don't have to have one in it, but you'd probably be looking down the road to maybe swap out the vehicle that's considered, that has to follow the policy with more efficient one. And then the last criteria, which is criteria five, which is minimize lifecycle costs, that recommended way to meet that criteria is through the stretch energy code. The stretch energy code is an optional building code, it's been around since 2009, it was put out by the Board of Building Regulations and Standards, and the two codes between the base code, which North Brookfield's following today, and the stretch code are very similar. One of, the biggest difference is that the base code does not require performance testing in full, it just requires pieces of it, where the stretch code does. The base code still allows some prescriptive, which means if you went to the doctor and you were sick, the doctor gives you a prescription, you know, take antibiotics three times a day, and you follow the course of your medication. Well, that's kind of how the prescriptive works on the base, on the base code side of the building code. The stretch code is modeling, it's where you're looking at the different components of the home on the residential side, you know, what type of windows, what type of heating system, what type of insulation you're putting in, hot water system and so on, and you're modeling it to meet a certain performance. So, when you buy a fridge at Lowe's or Home Depot, it tells you how much electricity it's going to use over the year. It's a similar concept on the building side. I just want to reiterate that on the stretch code, it does not apply for additions and renovations. This is a topic in itself, it does require adoption at town meeting. I've worked with, you know, a lot of communities in my region, and one of the things we do offer to every community looking at this is to have a presentation on the stretch code. So, it's a presentation about 15, 20 minutes, we have consultants that will come out and do it, they walk through kind of the course of the base code, the course of the stretch code, explain the two, and we also have cost analysis in the presentation that kind of explain what the difference in price is between the two. If you can go to the next slide, it shows you a map. So, to date, we have 278 communities that have adopted the stretch code. If you look up here, you see 278, or on the map of Green Communities, you see 271. This map is a really good indicator, the difference of those seven communities are ones that are looking to still achieve green communities, they've adopted the stretch code, they're on their way, and you can kind of tell who will likely be coming in in the next round.
So, is that for just new facilities, new buildings?
So, it's for new construction, both on the residential and the commercial side. It does not apply for renovations and additions. And that's actually a change that came out of the last version of the base code, and that would be explained in the presentation. So, one of the reasons I highly advise communities to hear about it is, obviously, it has to go to town meeting, having a presentation will let residents hear more about it before bringing it to town meeting and then understanding the history of it, because the base code changes every three years, so it evolves, as well as the stretch code has changed a couple times, too. All right, you have your opinion.
All right, so, now that you've kind of heard about what it takes to gain designation, I just want to kind of explain to you a little bit on where CMRPC can help you with all of this work. So, we do assist towns to help gain designation, we understand the program, we understand the process, we can, you know, help you every step of the way, we can help you look at your zoning if you need to redo the solar bylaw. We help, we rewrite the energy reduction plan, and we help, we look at the vehicle inventory list, we can determine which ones are exempt and not exempt, and then, you know, we can also help you with passing the energy stretch code if there's some information that you need there. And, so, one of the parts of gaining designation and writing the energy reduction plan is that you have to work with an expedited vendor that has been vetted and approved by the utility companies to, they perform the energy audits, they write up the list of projects, and when we can help communicate, we can work with the vendor that the town chooses to make sure that all the projects are, you know, lined up and that the process moves smoothly. We can help put everything into MEI, update MEI, there's a, there would be an agreement that would have to be signed by the selectmen that would allow us to gain access to the town's account, and that's something that we can then, you know, use on a daily basis when helping write the energy reduction plan, and then with, in the future, on annual reporting and applications. And so, and then, oh, go back, sorry. And so, one thing, and we will also submit the application on the town's behalf, we'll do any of the necessary edits, so we're really kind of the people that are doing the day-to-day management and then helping do the grant admin for these designation grants and for the competitive grants. We are working with Spencer, we are working with all the towns in your area, I'm working with the town of West Brookfield, and I've got a colleague of mine that's working with the town of Spencer and New Braintree. So, we are very involved in this program and in this area, and we know that a lot of our smaller towns don't have the staff or capacity to manage all the daily grant administration tasks, so we, you know, we do, we do have the capacity, we do help the towns, and we would be willing, and I would be willing to help North Brookfield undertake the process. We do have some deal, so, DLTA is a, the District Local Technical Assistance, is a state grant program that we, that RPAs receive funding for every year, and so, this year, we did allocate, and it was approved by our agency's Physical Development Committee, $5,000 to help North Brookfield towards the grant, towards the designation process. There are additional funds that the town could apply for through Green Communities to receive additional assistance, assistance for us to help you with the designation, but you know, we do have this small pot of money already set aside for, to help the town, and if, you know, you choose not to go forward with designation, we can just, you know, move that to something else, but we do have, we have. that to something else, but we do have, we have already approved that. And so again, as we, as I sort of said, you know, we would help with the grant administration, all of the, um, writing the quarterly reports, writing the final reports, checking in with the vendor to make sure that implementation of the projects is going smoothly and addressing any concerns. Um, and then, once you have to start completing an annual report, we can help you, um, complete that, or we can, um, to make sure that you guys are staying, um, compliant with all the regulations and then, and again, addressing any concerns. And we do, um, help write and submit the competitive grant applications for towns once they finish up that designation grant. So that is green communities in a nutshell. Let us know if you have any questions. And, um, I think going from here, what we would want to see is if you are interested in pursuing it, just to, um, to vote on it so we can get, you know, a, a solid answer of yes, the town wants to commit to the process and go for designation, so then I can, we can start working on, um, getting some initial things set up, so.
When do you need to know by?
Um, really anytime. So, um, like, we're, we're helping towns right now with applications that are due at the end of this month and at the end of March. So we probably wouldn't be starting to work on, you know, new designations until after that. Um, the sooner we know, the sooner we can start helping you with, um, any sort of, uh, solar bylaw revisions in order to get that scored away in time for, for the approval, um, at town meeting, at the town meeting. But if you want to...
So you don't need to know tonight?
We don't need to know tonight, no.
And the commitment, it, what, what he means by a commitment is it really is just saying that you guys are committed to looking at the process? I mean, there's no way for you to know what's gonna happen at town meeting. There's no way for you to know if the stretch code's gonna pass. So we've been offering this type of assistance for a long time. CMRPC's been offering district local technical assistance to bridge the gaps between, um, what we offer, and that's really what you would be looking into and what you'd be signing off on. A lot of the other things are unknown until you get a lot more information.
No. You said that, um, Regi isn't funded by the state budget?
So Regi, it's just, so green communities' grant funds are not tied to the direct state budget.
Where's it come from?
Regi is a cap-and-trade on like carbon allowances. It's a cap-and-trade, it's completely separate.
So where does the money come from?
It comes from, um, people polluting. Over allowance, so if you, so you're supposed, so under Regi, they have certain limits that they're allowed to meet. And if they go over the limit, then they have to pay into it, and that, those amounts that they pay into for polluting more...
So like a manufacturer or...
Who is they?
Who's doing the polling?
Who is they? They're, they're...
So the, the, like, um, industrial and whatnot, but I can send you some information on it.
Okay, so like Vibram is someone who would get, um, tested to see if they're complying with whatever this is?
Six-eight conveying, it's like, but it's, so I should point out, too, when it's regional, there's nine states that join together to this. It's been around for like 11 years.
Is it, is it related to like the Clean Air Act or the Clean Water Act, or is it something separate than that, or...
It's, yeah, it's something that nine states join together.
The Northeast, right?
Yeah.
Like down in Virginia or something like that?
Well, what do they...
And it's separate than the alternative compliance payments, which is where you have renewable requirements, because they're, because people do mix them up to either what I just explained. And then you have the alternative compliance payments, which is every year, there's a certain percentage of, um, that's supposed to go, be going renewable. And if we're not meeting that, and companies aren't meeting that, then they have to pay alternative compliance payments. And that's on the renewable energy side. And as you get, as years have gone by, I think since 2010 until like 2020, the percentage has gone up and up and up, which those funds have actually, um, gone down a little bit because most of the people are complying with the percentages they're supposed to have on the renewable.
So they're paying to offset their carbon output that exceeds a certain level...
Yes.
To entice us to reduce ours to offset theirs.
Kind of passes down, yes. And then they take that money and put it into, um, efficiency-type programs. So some of it goes into MassSave as well, that comes into Mass26.
So this is something that the state voted, the state legislature voted on and passed?
Many years ago. I'm happy to send you more information on it if you want. It's, it's been around for a while. It's not new.
Sure, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, it's not something new, is what I wanted to, it's not a new...
Oh, no, I've heard, I've heard...
Because there's a lot of different stuff being talked about right now on the climate side. Um, Regi's not new.
I've heard the cap-and-trade before, so...
If you, if you think of the Regi as kind of a penalty...
Yes.
And the legislature has voted to say, you're gonna use that pile of penalty money to get back into the communities and clean up what they have there, as opposed to using a line item budget in the general budget, general fund. You're using the penalty money to, to give back and through the grants.
I mean, ideally, it's probably trying to keep it down and discourage people from doing it, but then if it happens, that's, that's the results of it.
And I also kind of want to add, um, with these grants, that there is no match required by the town. So if, say you got, you know, that 135,000, um, for the designation grant, you would not have to match any of it. In order to expend all of the funds, by the end, um, you might have to pitch in a hundred dollars or so, um, depending on how we would fade, um, how we would select the projects, but, uh, we, we try to make sure that the town doesn't have to put in anything, um, to implement these projects. And it would then also lower your, your utility bills, so you're getting this money to implement projects that would then lower your operating costs, um, annually. And we do, and we have seen projects make substantial savings, um, for towns, um, just variety of what they would might be.
Yeah. Just to clarify...
Who spends the money?
The town.
The town come, you get the 135,000 in the grant, and how do we, how do we designate it to what projects we, to you guys? You're gonna do a survey of...
So the energy reduction plan. So going through the court, the whole process of putting the, um, the energy reduction plan together, my boss likes to call it a big term paper, because it definitely takes a while to, um, put together. So what you would do is looking at all your different buildings and, um, and schools, you're gonna come up with many different projects. And then you're gonna prioritize those projects over the five years. So you're gonna say, we look to do these projects in year one, year two, and while you're doing that, we definitely advise you to say, as you're thinking about year one projects, think about your designation grant and what that amount would be, so you're kind of lining it up with how you're putting it into the plan. And then you guys, you guys are really the ones deciding. Um, there could be different needs, different priorities.
So we could do five projects if we, if we could...
If you had the, if it fit under the 135. Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, I'll definitely encourage you to look at lighting and, you know, heating measures, because they make a difference. It's just like, you know, stocks, you want to have a diversified portfolio when you're looking on the energy side, um, and we'll help you through that process, but yes. So the funds, um, go to the town, and the town really is the one that decides what projects go on the grant application, but we definitely can advise you.
So if you know of, if you know of a building that you want to sort of prioritize first or, um, buildings that you know that you might be selling, so maybe don't include those, and through the designation process, and then once towns are designated and determining which projects they want to apply that, um, 135,000 to, that's when, um, Kelly and myself, we can work with you to, to go over all the projects, along with the, um, your chosen um, then energy or expedited vendor, to determine, you know, what projects make the, the most sense, which projects are you looking to complete, which buildings are you looking to target? And then we help make the decision, um, in order to, and then, you know, write the narrative application for it.
Oh. I just want to clarify one thing that Ian said, and you just kind of addressed on the projects. So we don't have a match required, that's correct, but we also are using public funds, and we want to be conscientious of the public funds and making good investment with those funds and helping the communities reach their goals. So if projects do come in that have very long paybacks, you know, far exceeding their measured life, there are projects that are an end-of-life measure, so you need to replace it, but it doesn't have a ton of savings with it. We will help fund those projects the best we can with you, but there could be a project that came in, and if it's an air handling unit and it's a 35-year payback, and it far exceeds the measured life, we might say, if you guys want to do this, you'd have to kick in some funds. So I just want to, just want to, you know, state that you're gonna see times where towns have matched it, and that's the reason why. It's not because it's required, it's because of the type of project and using the funds the right way.
But again, we won't know if, you know, if the town has any of those projects until after the, um, vendor would complete the energy audit of all the, all the buildings that the town would like to, you know? So...
Any other question? No?
What are the cons?
What are the cons?
You gave us a bunch of pros, what are the cons?
Any drawbacks?
I mean, so over the 10 years, so I've been out here before, definitely sat in this room, and, um, I would say, you know, I've, I've worked with West Brook, I worked with West Brookfield for many years to do it. So I think that if you had asked me three or four years ago, um, the stretch code and the, the base code have gotten closer, so that was something that there was, um, there still is a lot of education that sometimes needed to be around that. Does it apply for additions or renovations? Does it not? Because there's been changes to it. Um, and a few years ago, we didn't, we didn't roll out like the regional energy planning assistance and CMRPC offering DLTA till we saw that smaller communities really needed this assistance and to help them come in. So I think that was harder four or five years ago to sometimes do all this work and have, you know, a smaller community that doesn't have as much staff. Um, but we have been able to kind of adjust and meet the needs of more communities, and that's why we have 271.
So the, the biggest question that comes to my mind, uh, has to do with some other things that we've had, you know, roll out, we get money, and then the money runs out, and then we still have to keep things funded. For instance, if we were to buy, say, we made our whole fleet group energy-efficient vehicles, right? And then, you know, 10 years down the road, we could replace a couple, and we don't have the money.
Yeah.
What do we do?
So, um, I mean, I can give you an example even on the stretch code. So I've been doing this for 10 years, and communities, at the local level, you guys, you know, you always want to make sure that you have some control. And so communities have asked all along the way, if the building code changes every three years, what happens if we don't like one of the changes? And I, you can always un-adopt it. But if you won't adopt it, then you would not be a green community anymore, and you wouldn't have access to the grant funding. We even put in our language in one of our guidance documents, it doesn't mean, because people say, what if we don't hit the 20%? Doesn't mean you'd have to hit, give back grant funding, because you wouldn't, you were a green community when you got it, but you wouldn't have more grant funding. So to that point, a little bit of what you were saying. Um, the other thing is, is we've given out over 110 million dollars since 2010. We've had a pretty steady stream. The program didn't start out with up to 20 million dollar annual. It actually started out with up to 10 million dollars. And then in 2017, we went back to the legislature and said, we have a lot of green communities, the pool's gotten a lot larger. Common question's always like, as more green communities come in, does that mean less grant funding? So they went back and increased it from 10 million to 20 million. But to give a little more information, I think I'll leave that question to Brian, because he's actually in the room and deals more with the budgeting end of our program. So if you want to just let them know...
That was a great question to ask, because I know exactly where you're going, is if we, if you put something in with the project, say a boiler, and well, now you gotta maintain that boiler moving forward, so it's gonna be money, but what you've done already is saved on what you replaced and everything else. So budget-wise, you're gonna be always in the, in the pot, you will have saved energy costs, right? Your energy costs will have gone down. Your maintenance will go down, because you're now dealing with a new system. So your return on investment's already been paid before you get to a point you say, well, wait, we don't have the money anymore to maintain that yet. When you replaced what you weren't probably maintaining, or we're gonna run out of maintenance anyways.
Right, but the, the problem in a small town like North Brookfield is we've, we've always got a tight budget. And, you know, we've got roads that need help, we've got, you know, all the buildings need help, we need a new fire station, we need all this stuff. The, the money, it all goes into a general fund, so the money saved from one project is gonna go to something else. So you, we can't really guarantee that money saved on changing the lights to LEDs, just to keep it minimal, uh, changing all the lights to LEDs is gonna, you know, give us some sort of savings next year, you know, because it's gonna get, you know, the money will be put somewhere else because it's in a general fund.
Yeah, which is true. I think the point...
But you will have replaced those lights the first time, so you won't have to go back and do them again.
Yeah. The other point, like, so working with Berry, which is another small community, and they were tight, and they've been in the program for a while, I think a lot of the benefits they've had is they've been able to upgrade their buildings, do things that they needed to do, provide maintenance, keep the building, and not have to have some of those items be going to town meeting that would need to be done anyways. Um, so that's been a huge benefit. Um, you know, they've received quite a bit of money, if I go back to the slide, and it's, you know, tightening up the building envelope, putting in heating systems, things you guys would really have to do anyways. We like to see the efficiency side, we want to see, you know, the reduction in gallons of oil or thermese, but you guys just have to be able to have buildings operate, provide heat, and allow them, you know, the fire station to do their job, the police station as well. And both of those things have kind of helped communities with this program. They've been able to save money, get grants to do projects that they would need to probably do anyways.
Right, but so, we're not, we're not locked into a cost, right? So if we just fall out of, fall out of compliance with the criteria, we lose our designation, we lose grant money.
Yeah, I mean...
Or we'll, we'll only lose future grant money.
Yeah, and falling out would be like un-adopting the stretch code. There's staff changes, there's resource challenges sometimes, you know, sometimes one year versus the next, like, sometimes there'll be a community that, you know, might, might miss an annual report. We're obviously bringing CMRPC in and those kind of resources to help communities not have that happen, but we understand it, and it's like, the reason we have annual reports is to keep in communication, but not, the reason I said you'll see different grant amounts up, back on this slide, is because certain communities can finish their projects a lot faster than other communities, and that's why they range in grant amounts up there. And all of that's still fine with us. We work with all of the different paces, you know, we work with all the different resource levels. We just pride to bring in more resources, having the RPA's be assist, be assisting towns to try to help with communities that might need, you know, don't have as much full staff, full-time staff.
So we need up to 135?
Come in again.
Okay, we could come back.
Or in the same token, you might not come in again for a couple of years and do it. There's some communities that have been designated and come in every couple of years for a project.
Yeah.
There's other communities that come in and do a project a year, and they're just, they're just, you know, doing it.
You'd be eligible.
You don't have to come in every year and force a project.
Yeah. You'd be eligible. Most of my communities, a lot of them have found a really good cycle every other year, unless they come in for a couple of small things. Like we, we did, we do give out funding for EV charging stations, we do give out funding, you know, for electric, some funding to go to electric vehicles, so sometimes they might come in for a small grant like that. But a lot of my communities that have kind of found a good rhythm do come in every other year, allowing them some time to put together their next grant application. And depending on the type of projects you do, if you're doing a heating project, and depending on when we award you, you might miss the heating season and have to wait till when you're able to do it in the warmer weather.
So if you're, I mean, if you're looking to make renovations to a building, um, say you want to completely redo, uh, the town hall offices, this is just, you know, one want to completely redo the town hall offices, this is just, you know, one source of funding that you can help offset some of those other costs, some of that cost of, say, renovating all the, all the offices by, you know, by taking care of the lights, heating, cooling system, the building envelope. So, that's just one, those, that's just one less thing that you have to fund with the general budget if you want to do these projects. And so, that's why we say, you know, we'll work with the town to help identify which are the, you know, what buildings would you like to target? Which buildings would you like to kind of focus on if you are thinking of doing some of these big capital improvement projects?
And the mass energy insight tool also allows you to start comparing your buildings. So, it allows you to start seeing which buildings are actually consuming the most energy and you might want to focus on, because for their square footage, they really shouldn't be. Maybe they, you know, that could be the one that really needs weatherization. Or why is, you know, on the square foot level, is that building consuming so much? You can, like, he just meant buildings to target. There is an actual buildings to target report that allows you to see which buildings are probably, doesn't mean it's, doesn't mean it's what we call an energy hog, because it consumes a lot of energy. It could be a school that's efficient, but it could be a library that on a square footage basis is using way more oil or gas or electricity than it should.
Anything else?
No, well.
Well, thank you for the time, thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And then we get back to you, if you're the first point of contact, if we choose to go-
Yes, I, I will be the town's point of contact for Green Communities, should you, should you own the board.
We got you.
You see me and I think-
Yeah.
Oh, you have to sign them, they're just those two appointments.
Anything more to be said on that issue at this point?
Not at this time.
Taking under advisement. Yeah, so if anybody that watched the presentation and has any comments for the board, you can email them to us so that we know what, what people are thinking. Otherwise, we'll take the matter up.
Yeah, please do.
All right. Comment period, anybody have anything to say? Anybody? All right. A couple of announcements. We have a grant award.
Yeah, definitely.
Did we talk about this already? Is this the one?
We've talked about it because I know it's-
So, February sixth, we received correspondence from the office of the governor. I'm pleased to notify you that the town of North Brookfield has been awarded a municipal vulnerability preparedness program grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand to complete a community resiliency planning process that will examine the town's vulnerability and strengths and identify priority actions to build resilience as the climate changes. I want to thank you for your commitment to building capacity in your community and working to ensure residents have the resources they need to deal with the challenges ahead. We want to commend the town's outstanding application in this round of our grant program and look forward to partnering with you on this important issue. Signed by the governor. And that's something that you are managing for, right? Excellent.
Should we ask for volunteers while we're on the subject?
Volunteers for one.
For the core team.
Oh, yeah, you need a team.
How many people do you need?
I need between four and six. Anne Hicks has volunteered, she'd like to be on the core team.
Okay.
Chief Hallway said he would be on the team. And Jim Nyberg, I believe he was going to look into it to see if he had availability. So, that was the other person that, and then Jason Benoit too, he was, I'm not sure. So, I'm going to get confirmation by the end of this week from everyone.
I think they'd be perfect for it.
Yeah, because it's a vulnerability and preparedness type thing, right? So, we need some core people. But if there's anybody, anybody in town that's interested in serving on something like that?
I moved to nominate John Tripp.
Again?
Could you say that this is a little bit loud about the volunteering? I missed what you were saying.
Thanks. I moved, I moved to nominate John Tripp.
Okay.
Yeah. It was a joke, I'm not seconded now.
It beat the war. All right. And that's all set. Oh, we had a, the flags from the library are missing, correct?
Yep.
Is that what I heard?
Yep, I was approached today and apparently sometime over the winter, the rope broke and the flags took off and we don't know where they are. So, they, people have looked for them. The Legion is going to replace the American flag, but we, apparently we had a, we had a POW flag on there and we don't have another one of those. So, if anybody knows where those are or if they found some flags and they're wondering where they belong, they belong to the library, so be on the lookout.
Yep. We have a POW flag in the town house basement that was on the town house if we want to put it up there. We didn't put it back up, because we weren't done painting, but if they want, it's downtown, it's down in the basement.
Yeah, that's probably good for temporary, temporary picks.
It seems like it would hang up there, but just something if we-
Good. And do we need to read this election thing again?
Not the whole thing, just to talk to highlighted ones.
The highlighted one?
The, yeah. The school committee and then the Board of Health, they're both not going up for reelection.
So, the 2020 election will take place Monday, May fourth, in the annual town meeting that Friday, May eighth. Last day to submit nomination papers to the registrars is Monday, March sixteenth. Last day to submit papers to the town clerk is Wednesday, April first. And we're still looking for candidates for a couple offices, although all of them, you have free to run for all of them, but as of right now, the school committee, three years is without a candidate. Kristen DePass is not seeking reelection this year. So, if you're interested in serving on the school committee, please get your nomination papers in, you can see the town clerk for the papers. The other open spot is the Board of Health. There's a three-year seat open at the Board of Health. Robert Locatelli is not seeking reelection for that. He is on a number of other boards in town, so he's still active, but he's not seeking reelection for the Board of Health. So, if you're interested in that position, please see the clerk for nomination papers. And the Southern Worcester County Vocational School, Don Gillette has returned his papers, so we have somebody for that. All the other spots, they come up every three years. One spot comes up every year, but an individual serves for three years. They all have candidates, but if you're interested in any position in town, see, see the town clerk and take out nomination papers. Anything else?
I have one more announcement. So, for everybody that showed up last week to our public hearing on the sewer upgrade and expansion, I want to thank you all for coming. And I want to let everybody know that next Wednesday, so a week from tomorrow, I believe it's the twenty-sixth, at seven thirty, we're having a public hearing in East Brookfield at the town hall there to talk to them about expanding into East Brookfield if they so desire. That's all.
And that's posted on the, on the town page I saw today.
On the website.
So, the webpage has that date and time?
Yep.
Does it have location?
Yes.
Okay. Anything?
No.
All right. Oh, I think we need to publicly thank John Tripp for repairing the bench in front of the cemetery at, what was that?
Main, not Main Street.
Yeah.
Three of them.
Three of them?
Three of them. I got one at the house and there's two there now.
Oh, good. Were there three there?
There was only one, but there used to be three.
Oh, okay.
So, I found more sets of the ends, so I rebuilt those.
Excellent.
Is that the one halfway up the hill with two seventy-one? Two, two seventy-one?
Yes, yes. There's two there now, there'll be a third one there tomorrow. I finished it last night and it's on my trailer to be delivered in the morning.
And that was a real eyesore there.
I have a picture of it, Ray.
Really?
Yep, it was falling apart and disrepair, so my wife and I loaded it into my pickup last week, took it home and I rebuilt it in the basement. And then I found more sets of the sides, the side rails, and I repaired, I made two more, so that's three.